All right, so I think we're gonna call the meeting to order at 6:03 on Monday, June 10th in the Woodbury Town Library. Any adjustments to the agenda this evening?
Uh, yeah, there's a complaint, a dog complaint to be discussed.
You said a dog complaint?
Dog, yeah. And, um, I don't know when we should do that, but, um...
Do I put it on "Updates and Other Business"?
Sure.
Okay, dog complaint.
Since the person hasn't shown up here.
Okay.
Okay, and Skip is gonna do his ducking under the town clerk's report.
Okay.
I'll be quick, I promise.
And then there's the person who's not here, I think, right?
The what?
The person with the Declaration of Inclusion.
That's right, I wanted to say the person to... Who has been requesting to be put on the agenda to sign the... Ask us to sign the Declaration of Inclusion. We finally put her on the agenda and found out she lives in Rotten and is not gonna be able to come to any meeting. So unless we can see her by phone, which I didn't really have time to deal with that today to figure out how to do that.
We could just table that?
Yeah, we could table it, so if she says...
We could set up the Zoom thing for remote, if you want.
Can we do that here?
Yes, we can, in this room.
Yeah, Michael's the only one that knows how to do that.
I don't mind him doing it, but I'm fine with setting it up.
Yeah, but we stole your computer, wasn't it?
No, I never get that computer.
Okay, well...
I use my own.
Okay, so that'll be tabled. If there's no other adjustments, the next item is to approve the minutes from our May 28th meeting. So what is the board's pleasure?
Well, I guess I'll move that we approve them.
There's a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes from May 28th, please say aye.
Aye.
There is a slight comment here on the town clerk's report. Last time, we thought it was gonna cost $401 to keep up the green books. But this morning, when I was looking for something else, I came across this announcement from the town, from this state librarian, who said that the state is gonna have to pay an extra $401 for anybody who wants to keep getting those books.
Oh, so it wouldn't come to us.
So, yeah, so, and the deadline was Friday, and I was just reading it this morning, and so I jumped on there and I said, "Please, it's only a day late." And they said, "Okay," they would put us on the list, so, okay. Robinson, when she, even though she got, did not say that.
She didn't?
Okay. Well, that's good news.
Yeah. So there's the minutes she confirmed.
All right.
Anyone want an extra copy? I'm wondering if you guys want me to make extra copies of the minutes for you so you can add them to your piles?
Oh, yeah, probably might be good to have. There were a couple times where I had to go through my pile of papers looking.
Yeah.
I have, I have them on my computer.
Okay.
I mean, I'm happy to take them.
Okay.
I'm happy to do. Not collecting a lot of paper these days.
Yeah, well, thank you. Here, here's one for you. Anybody else? Testing out my printer today.
Uh, I believe you gentlemen all have a place, but if you prefer, or if you would like to make public comment, this is the, this is your opportunity here. All right, seeing that there's no other public here, we're gonna, aside from town officials, we're gonna move on to the town clerk's report.
Do you want Skip to do his little presentation first?
It's up to you two.
I'll be going first.
Sure.
I just wanted to come and give the select board an update of what's going on from an IT perspective. I stood up at the meeting, announced that, you know, looking for help. We've had some people come forward. Specifically, I have Wayne Lappin and Stephen Murphy, and they're sort of newbies, but, you know, they have various levels of IT background. That said, I also started to look for ways to offload what I'm doing and basically get what's in my mind recorded someplace. And I ran across RV Technologies. They're down in North, East Muckley, off of about 14. And I worked with them in the past when I had some networking issues in my house. Long story short, they came out and they surveyed our facilities, and they're gonna get back to us with a proposal to do remote management of the facility. That's part one. Part two is, they're gonna tell us what equipment we need to upgrade the network infrastructure in the clerk's office. Because right now, I guess a good way to describe it is a mess, right, Robin?
Yeah.
You know, stuff hanging off the cables and behind, it's a mess. And if somebody has to come in there and figure it out, they're gonna look at it, turn around and walk out. So anyway, the rough estimate on that, and this is a very, very rough estimate, in terms of replacing the equipment, having the building rewired in terms of adding the networking cable there, and mounting new equipment on a... As you can add in the basement, you go in the back of the basement, go around the corner, go around the corner, there's a space there, okay? It's sort of the south, back south wall of that room in the basement. That's where we can mount the equipment. It's sort of underneath where the cables come down anyway. Very rough estimate on that. It's somewhere between $48,000, okay? Very rough estimate, that will be $48,000.
That does, sorry to interrupt, just clarification. That does not include a cost for remote management too, right?
That's not the cost for remote management.
That's just to clean up things up.
That's a monthly fee.
Yeah.
And I don't, have no idea what that is, I gotta look at it. This is sort of grim. Right now, as of last Friday, we're gonna roll all of Woodbury's IT infrastructure into this remote management. That's the clerk's office, that's the town hall, that's the garage, that's the library. And Sergio Murphy is on board with the library, especially since Sarah Van Hoff retired. And I installed the equipment in the library and Sarah took it over from me. Did an excellent job, but she's left and Stephen's sitting there scratching his head. You know, just an example of what happens when somebody leaves and they got all the knowledge. It's, it becomes interesting. And when I talk about remote management of the town hall, remember we had an issue a year ago, two years ago? You contacted me and said, "How can we put a password on that?"
Yeah.
And we said, "We can't really..." Oh, that was the...
That was the town office.
Town office, but we had people doing illegal downloads of videos here from the town hall from the network that...
Comcast?
No.
How far, what?
Next to you.
Next.
Michael, thank you! Why did it have to be my issue? Michael had set up a small network there, and people were logging onto that, and they're doing illegal downloads and stuff.
Someone did.
I don't remember that.
Yeah, you had your router in there, and people were logging onto that.
No, I, that was a town router in the town hall? It wasn't my router.
Somebody had a router in there that set up a wireless network.
I do remember that, okay?
And it's gone now, thank God, but it's, you know, nobody can get on that network. But with remote management, they put something called a smart switch in there, okay? They can program ports on that switch to say, "You can't do this stuff on this port." Can we, can put a remote antenna out there and we can broadcast internet signal to the parking lot, to the park across the way? It doesn't stop people from downloading their emails. It doesn't stop people from doing wifi calling and contacting their drug dealer. But they can go over to this place, it's a good name, but it stops the... Stops a lot of the nefarious stuff. Not saying we're gonna do that, but that business, that capable of doing. Does that make sense? So, as part of this thing with RV Technologies, we're gonna do a site visit there on the 17th. Is that right, Michael?
My skip?
The other skip. We're gonna do a site visit there on the 17th. And Skip Lindsey's gonna come, I'm gonna go, Stephen Murphy's gonna go, and Wayne Lappin's gonna go. So we all have IT backgrounds. And it is that the RV Technology person said to me, "Why do you wanna come and do a site visit?" I said, "I wanna make sure you're not scamming us." We wanna see their facilities, see what they've got, see their server room, see how they handle callbacks, et cetera. So they would basically be giving us normal working hour support. So if there was a major issue, you can call there, and they can log into the computers remotely. They would be taking care of all backups. They would be taking care of all software updates. It's a huge thing off my shoulders. This still would require people like me to be able to interface with Robin and Brandy and Pam for the nitty little stuff. Is this, is this a spam email? And Robin does that when she has something that's in question. She either calls me and sends me an email and says, "Which shall I do with this?" And generally, trash it, okay? So that's RV Technologies. Any questions on that so far? And again, this is, this, nothing is committed here, okay? This is just, you know, investigation. And when I have firm numbers, we'll get back to the select board with them.
So I just wanted to ask, Skip, you confirm that that's needed?
Yeah.
Oh, it's always good to have a network operations center looking at your stuff. You know, surveilling it, you know, 7x24x365. It's essential, plus, you know, if they have whatever rate level they have, Skip, I don't know what they have, but if they have backup and it's remote backup, you know, that's, that's the best you can do, you know, so...
It brings us into the 21st century from an IT perspective, and we should be good for at least five years, maybe 10 years, before we go look at it again. I don't know, I'll be here in 10 years, so something else is all.
So I just took a note, I'm gonna contact FEMA and see if we can get any money for reimbursement for any of this cost and see if we can tie it somehow into the disaster as a mitigation strategy, you know, going forward, so... Yeah, it's a shot in the dark, but at least it's something I can...
Hey, it's worth it.
The infrastructure would probably have to be out of the basement.
Yeah. It'd be up high enough on the wall.
Okay.
As long as it's out of the...
I asked a question to you.
Yeah.
How high did the wall, how high did the wall come? And it was evidently up about a foot, Robin? This is gonna be up, you know, above four feet. It'll be chest level.
Is the town able to sign up, or who's our current internet service provider?
Next topic. Great, great, dear, thank you. Glad you get that. So at the same time, with all the emphasis on CB Fiber, I said, "All right, this is a perfect opportunity for the town to cut our ties with, pardon the expression, Ethan, RV Communications and Comcast." So I approached CB Fiber and said, "Here's what I wanna do." And they said, "Sure, we can do that, and just go sign up." So I go to sign up on the webpage. "We have to sign up as a commercial provider. The rates are ridiculous." I called them back and said, "Not gonna happen, okay? How can you charge a not-for-profit organization like the town, like a fire department, like the rescue squad, like any of the others that are out there? Commercial rates, they're not a business, they're not making profit. They're running off of budgets from the town, they're budget strapped." And I guess I hit a nerve, because the, I got directed to the manager of technical, manager of customer service, very nice lady. And by the way, if you're not aware, Wade Steel Telecom is managing all this for CB Fiber. They are excellent, okay? They're a very, very good organization out of, out of Wade Steel from up. So she says, she took down everything I said, said, "Let me take it up to the board and let me get back to you." She called me back and she said, "The board's willing to consider residential rates for the, for the town of Woodbury." And then it dawned on me, at that point in time, well, the town of Woodbury is more than just the clerk's office and the town hall. It's also the library and it's also the garage. So I threw that all in, they basically said, "Yeah, we would consider all that." And then this woman, the director, the manager of customer service got back to me and said, "One of the members on the board says, 'I'm not allowed to talk to you because you're not a town employee, you're only a volunteer.'"
What?
So I said, "Well, you know what? You can talk to the town clerk all you want, but guess what she's gonna do? She can point you to me." So they asked for a letter authorizing me. I wrote that letter, Robin signed it, gave it back to me, I sent it to them today. So my title, and we talked about this before, is voluntary IT manager for the town, if anybody asks you. And I need a raise.
Did you ever talk to John Reed?
Yeah, oh, I copied John Reed, like we said, on that note. And John got back to me and said, "Excellent note. We have been pushing the board to do this."
He's on the board?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, they've been pushing, he said, "They've been pushing the board to do it." And the other issue that came to light over the weekend is three-season camps, okay? They need a seasonal rate. Because talking to people agreed with like, they would go with CB Fiber if they can discontinue or they can, you know, suspend their service and not have to pull, pay the full rate. And as again, as I talked to people at CB Fiber this morning, they said, "A lot of people have been pushing for that now that camps are opening up, so the board's addressing that also." So that's where all that stands. And again, I'm negotiating with CB Fiber and nothing's in concrete. They gotta get back those prices and, you know, what it's gonna cost. You know, they gotta look at each location and see what's involved in getting the fiber into the building. In most cases that I'm aware of, it's gotta be running conduit. We don't have conduit at the clerk's office. We don't have conduit at the town hall, but I don't understand how that works because the wires are coming over the highway there. There's conduit at the school here for this building. And I don't know about the garage, I've never looked at the garage. But they would look at that and figure out what's gonna be done. Any questions on CB Fiber? The last thing is our copier lease with Canon is up in December. And to say that that is a piece of, the one that we have today is a piece of shit, is putting it mildly. We tried to set that up to do mass volume scanning for Skip Murphy, for the FEMA stuff. I spent hours on that, could not get it to work. And Canon would not give us any customer support. Kept sending us documents, the same documents. I was finding this stuff on YouTube, couldn't get it to work. So I reached out to, through RV Technologies, I said, "Who do you guys recommend for printer vendors?" They gave me two companies. And both those companies have got back to me. I've sent them the information they request, I don't wait for them to get back to me. And one of my requirements is you're gonna have to demo this stuff to make sure it works. We're not taking your word for it. Been very much, I've been very twice.
What kind of prices were they giving you?
Don't know the answer to that yet.
Okay, 'cause if it's over $8,000, we have to go out the bid again.
Okay. $8,000 on a purchase, perhaps?
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess, yeah.
Other questions?
Unless there's a reason why, unless there's a reason not to.
That's true for a lease as well. Sounds like these are leases, and I don't know the answer.
Good question.
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know.
I'll find out what they're gonna charge us, and then we gotta figure it out.
Yeah.
Other questions?
And also for these other things that are needed, if they're not in the budget, we still need to buy them.
Yeah.
Don't you think? I mean, we need to do it. We can't just wait until another fiscal year comes around.
That would make me very happy.
Well, I guess it makes sense.
Not including the rates.
It makes sense to find out with RV Technologies back to us, but...
Yeah, we gotta find out what the financial... But I think if you guys get blindsided with, well, I come in with this, hey, here's what I've been doing, a lease type, planted the seed and said, "Get ready to, get ready to be smack upside the head with, you know, some expenses."
Thank you.
If we could only have accumulated all the hours you've given us over the years, we'd have thousands of dollars.
Well, just to put it in perspective, when I was consulting before I really retired, I was getting $300 to $500 an hour to do this. And you're building a t-hire right now. The other thing also is all the clerk's office PCs will be on Windows 11. By, hopefully by the end of June, definitely by the end of July. I basically got one more to do, and that's the listed PC. And I've got other stuff that's in front of that, and I'm trying to get them. Then a real retiring of PCs.
Well, we're lucky that you do it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
Good to have you working.
I'm just looking at the budget. We have $2,000 in computer equipment maintenance and then $6,500 in computer software support, so...
I think the software support is the bookkeeping thing. Is that the NIMRIC?
I do believe so, yes.
Software support?
Oh, okay, yeah, gotcha.
And here's another can of worms.
Who?
Talk to anybody that knows computer software about NIMRIC, and they'll tell you it's bad. But it's the only game at that.
Right. Well, and now we're gonna have to be hooked up with them for the whole reappraisal thing, 'cause there's nobody else that was even willing to give us a bid three years out, so... Yeah, they have us over the barrel.
I can go?
Thank you so much for all that work.
Thank you very much.
See you soon, yeah.
See you Sunday, uh, Monday, good to meet you. One day, if that's sooner.
Okay.
That's great. That's a lot of work. And Robin?
We have received the Washington County Sheriff's Department contract for this coming year. The hourly rate stayed the same, that's $60, but the mileage is going from .655 to .67 per mile.
Right.
And there are two copies here for you to fill in how much, the amount of dollars that you wanna spend and how many hours that you want the deputies to do.
How many hours?
That's what it said on there.
So how does, how does this work?
And then last year, or the year that we're in right now, we did $5,000.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure the budget for six years is $5,000 too.
So we ask them to like patrol or basically enforce speed?
That's basically what they do, yeah.
I mean, it says answering complaints here, but I'm not sure that they... Well, I'm just looking at, it says, "Contract conditions include that are not limited to furnishing patrols, answering complaints," which would mean coming when somebody calls. But I don't know how much that would do.
Kinda know what, how much, what kind of complaints. I mean, they answer complaints if the people call and say that people are driving too fast. I know they did that last year. But if somebody's dog is loose or people are being vandalized or something, I don't think they respond to that kind of complaint, no.
Yeah, they don't do much enforcement. They do serve, but they have to serve papers for the town.
They do, yeah, but they also charge separately for that.
Oh.
So it's basically five grand a year for speed enforcement.
Right. And most of that's down in Route 14. So it says, "The department agrees to furnish deputies for blank hours per week on a regular basis. The hours per week will be determined according to the contract length and contract amount." So, you know, they're, I guess, $5,000, and they can do the math themselves. I think that's what we did last year, I don't think we...
Uh, last year, it only had the $5,000 on there, it didn't have...
The number of hours. Yeah, we need to sign them both and then, one of them, they'll sign them both and send back one. Oh, they've already signed this one, okay.
They signed that one, yeah. Oh, they signed this one too. These are the same copy. It's one that's just for us.
So we'll keep one and send one back.
And we have also received the term of office for the Forest Fire Warden. Expires June 3rd of 2024. And they have suggested Paul Saruti again.
But they're the ones that appoint him, so I don't know why they're asking us that all of a sudden.
They want, they wanna make sure the select board approves it, that a place for the chair to sign, and then each of the numbers.
Okay.
And they're recommending call through?
Yes.
Good. Sounds great.
And Robin, who is it that sends, is that...
It's from Forest Park Recreation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I don't know if Michael received this memo or not, along with the town. It's from the Lamont Regional Planning Commission, that they couldn't hold their last meeting because they didn't have a forum. And they're requesting that everybody has a full time and then a backup person.
An alternate, yeah, we haven't had an alternate for a long time.
No, I've been trying to see if somebody else on the planning commission would be willing to do that, but no one has stepped forward, so...
Okay. And I also have the access permit for Molly Brock and Sarah Van Hoff.
Great.
And the, to look it up in the records, it's under Molly Kittredge.
And did we talk about this last meeting?
We did, but we, and we thought that, we had, we thought that Robin had the permit, but come to find out, Sarah had taken the permit home with her.
Right, right, right.
So we didn't have anything, so you, we agreed to sign it, even though we didn't have it yet.
Only two select people, not it.
Robin, I didn't receive them, I can't think of what meeting was canceled, so, maybe if I could...
They sent this June 6th.
This is just one?
I mean, I'm sorry, June 3rd.
Just two people?
Well, she did, she, well...
I don't know what meeting happened to her about it.
Yeah, pretty much.
Sarah Van Hoff and Molly. Oh, Molly, yeah, she did get married. What? Patrick must be her married name.
Brock's the married name.
What?
Brock is the married name.
So she was Van Hoff and, okay, whatever.
Oh, TAC thing, just the TAC. So I guess you should sign me up for the transportation, the TAC thing. We don't have a town rep for that. Anyway, I'll wait till you're done with that.
Elfi, you wanna sign this? You already signed it, I think, your copy, but you can sign that one.
So the meeting that Robin just mentioned about with the, I said, for Lamont Regional Planning Commission, that's the Transportation Advisory Committee, which the town does not have a representative to. So I guess you should appoint me.
I'd make a motion, that way you appoint Michael Gray to be a representative on the Transportation Advisory Committee of the Regional Planning Commission.
Any discussion?
Any other applicants? No?
Any other nominations?
Nominations?
Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Michael.
So there were no directions, restrictions, or conditions on this?
Uh, just what we talked about last meeting was, I wanted them to go straight across the road on an angle, to be minimum of four feet down.
Minimum of four feet down, okay.
Which for waterline, that's required in an ice, and all that.
What do you call that of?
Perpendicular.
Perpendicular is not an angle, but that's what I wrote, anyway.
Thank you. And then the last thing I have is, how did you make out with the fire alarm system for you?
So I printed the paper that we're supposed to sign, and I haven't heard anything back yet. I, I should reach out, but I kinda wanted to have the paper when I do that. So I, so no new news on that, except that we have this to sign.
We have that on the agenda further down there anyways.
Thank you, Robin.
You're welcome.
Well, wait, do you wanna report on that phone call you got on the, about the dog this morning?
Yes, I got a call from town resident up in West Woodbury that one of his neighbors has two large dogs that is jumping on his car and chasing him down the road at least a quarter of a mile. He said he's put in many complaints to the town. He's also had many complaints to the state police, and nothing has been done.
I don't remember hearing any complaints before.
I know, I think this is the first I've heard. Although it actually sounds familiar, like something I've heard in conversation.
But he is very upset.
Do we, so I know we won't say it on the record, but do we have... Do we, so I know we won't say it on the record, but do we have names?
Yes.
Okay.
And I tried to call him today, but I had the, I had the name wrong. I had the wrong first name, so.
You tried calling the person with
Who complained, but it wasn't the person who complained.
Oh.
So I tried. And we still don't have a, a dog officer, so I don't know what I would have said, but I just wanted to respond and
And we know who the owner of the dog is too?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. So if I had known his name and was able to call him, I would have suggested that he come here tonight. But by the time I realized I had the wrong person, it was four o'clock and he wasn't in the phone book, so. I mean, the right person wasn't in the phone book, so.
Well, it sounds like we need to keep that on our radar, right?
For sure, we need to have a, a dog warden, I mean, yeah.
Skip.
So in, in that light, I was just wondering if you guys have made any progress on those two ordinances that were before you guys last came from. One is the dog world hybrid ordinance, and the second is the large domestic animal ordinance.
We have not discussed them since, I think it was the flood sort of derailed the conversation, if I remember right. I don't think we've talked about it since. And I know you put a lot of effort into those.
Well, I don't know so much effort, but, um, might be good time to resurrect those two ordinances and take a fresh look at them. If you've lost them, I'm sure I got them in the files.
I found the file somewhere, so it's the same.
Does that make sense, put that in the next agenda?
Well, having a revised and bigger and better ordinance is not going to help us if we can't get an animal control officer. But, but we still should do it if it, and again, the, the whole, the large animal thing was, you had serious concerns with that anyways, right?
Just for the record, to be, um, fair to tell you guys all now, I don't really believe in adding ordinances to what we already have. Um, so that's kind of my standpoint on it, but I'm happy to talk about it.
And we, this is, I would say also a complaint that we got through the health department about old corero.
We have that on the agenda here.
So in the event that we had a, a dog warden, what, what would they do?
Good question.
What would they?
Empound the dog.
We had one situation
I mean, presumably, like, I'm sorry to interrupt, like, that would need to be somebody with some skills, right? Like, I, I wouldn't feel comfortable going up to two aggressive dogs, or presumably aggressive dogs, to impound them. So like, someone who knows what they're doing, we need to have somebody who knows what to do it.
I, I can tell you what our former animal control officer would do is basically he would go and pay the dog owner a visit and let them know there was a complaint and, um, give them a warning and then, um, and usually a written, some kind of written warning, so there's a written record of it. And then if, um, if the incidents continue to happen, then he would impound the dogs.
The one situation I can recall when he did take a dog, he did have a
Mosquito.
They did have a, he had a sheriff with him.
Okay.
To go and take the dog and then he was, kept it in his pound, his, you know, he is our pound keeper. And he has a kennel. But he
This is Kim. This is Kim.
Yeah, Kim. And he had, so he had the sheriff, I mean, it was several times that he'd been there, finally with the sheriff. And this wasn't a case where the dog was aggressive or needed to be corralled. The dog was tied up and barking all the time, so that's why there.
Right, and the person, the owner required a sheriff to be present also.
Right, yeah.
For Kim's protection.
Yeah. And the owner wasn't really a threatening person, but, yeah, but it's still a good idea.
Well, you never know, you know, people get crazy.
Okay.
That's all they have.
All right, thank you. Uh, next item is the bicycle safety signs, and Michael is here to
Yep.
lead us through that.
Um, so I'm Michael Sadler, and Ian, thank you for August, twenty twenty one, right? Skip and I gave, um, a really great presentation. It had the full range of human emotions, lots of laughs, lots of crying, it was incredible. If you weren't there, you really missed it.
Wasn't on HCTV?
No. No, but, um, but the content of that presentation was basically Skip and I had identified and, um, you know, this was also, um, born out of the town plan, was an effort to identify hot spots or blind spots around Woodbury's back roads that are popular cyclist roads that, uh, some folks treat like they're personal rally stages, um, or, um, are otherwise kind of like super low visibility like Valley Lake Road, um, or I think it's either Valley Lake or We live hill. Um, switchbacks, blind curves, narrow roads, roads that would otherwise allow cyclists to take up a larger lane position. State statute would allow cyclists to take up a larger lane position because of roadway design hazard or, um, steep slopes, um, something like that. So we had identified, I think, eight spots, um, and kind of walked through the placement of those signs, um, which was, you know, we would identify the center of the hazard and then I think a hundred feet out. Basically, it depends on the, um, on the speed limit of the road in general, but I think for our roads, for our back roads, class three dirt roads, it would be a hundred feet based on thirty-five miles an hour, I think is the speed limit on those roads. So
Hundred feet between the sign and the curve?
We would identify the hazard, the area that we thought was the hazard, and then a hundred feet on either side of that would be the proper placement for those signs. There's a lot of information in, caught up in an email in our old presentation, um, so I would defer to that if the number
I think you sent that around to us, right? Your presentation.
And we had some back and forth discussion, and I think the, the last thing that we landed on was that there was some discussion, some folks wanted discussion. Well, that, that presentation, the signage, their placement, the cost was all approved at that meeting in twenty twenty one, and then we had a discussion, and I think there's just a need for more talking or there's a desire to discuss more what the content of the sign is or, um, so I'm here to answer any questions that you have or, um, advocate that we either move forward with the approved plan from twenty twenty one or come to an agreement here or keep the discussion going for another meeting, I guess.
I think if I remember correctly, that we were ready to go ahead with this, it was this, simply the, like, the verbiage on the signs that I think that created a little confusion for all three of us. And I can't even remember what it said.
The background is that the, the signs that we had selected, uh, said, um,
Full lane, something like that.
Cyclist may use full lane, or bicycle icon may use full lane. Um, and we chose that sign because Skip and I had found, um, or rather Skip had found and sent around a study, National Highway Safety Study, that basically said, share the road signs, that kind of stuff is not super effective. And what we're trying to avoid is, you know, the inherently kind of disadvantaged meeting of a car and a cyclist or a pedestrian. You three rightfully brought up that there are a lot of different folks that use the roads, right? So, um, I think may use full lane was the thing that was confusing. Yeah.
So if, if the riders are, um, led to believe that they can ride in the middle of the road and a car comes along and hits them, who's at fault? Well, that's a stupid question, because of course the car's at fault, but it still seems like, it just seems like you're leading people to believe that the riders have the right to ride in the middle of the road. I realize they do practically, for practical matters all the time, and that's probably the safest place.
Yeah.
But on some of these curbs, it might not be so safe.
I think I, that's a reason for the signs.
Yeah.
On some of those curbs.
I said, I think I disagree that the, I disagree that the sign would cause a rider to move all the way out into, so there's the full road width.
Yeah.
And then as a cyclist, um, you know, usually what I'm doing when I'm riding my bike is I'm dividing that full road width in half.
Yeah.
And I'm usually riding on the very right, the most right-hand portion of that, my half that I can.
Best part of the road.
The, it is the best part of the road, it's the loosest you can get, the squareliest, the squareliest you want on, on that, that part of the road, but to me
Right, you mean the, the outside, the head shoulder, yeah, the shoulder, yeah.
Yeah, the center, the center is the safest place on a bicycle.
What are you saying, this
Well, I, we're, I'm
The center, the center of the lane and the center of the road, I think is the
Yes, that's
That's the real question.
That's a difference, yes. We imagine that we had a double yellow down the middle of all of our, I think they're, they're, Alfie, they're like, they're like lane and a half, lane and three quarters width. So it's not, it's not like a true two-lane road. But cyclist may use full lane kind of signals to me as a cyclist that, um, I would be able to move. I'm usually riding, when I'm riding single, when I'm riding by myself, I'm usually riding right on the shoulder. Right on the, the, the line between really uncompacted gravel and our nice, nicer road base. And that would basically signal to me that I can take maybe one or two of my own body width and be out more in my own lane, not in the middle of the road or in the oncoming lane, but take more of my own lane so that I can maybe avoid some of those hazards or get a better angle to be able to see around the hazard or something like that. Um, I don't necessarily agree that it would cause cyclists to ride in the middle of the road.
Okay, 'cause that was, was, wasn't clear to me, whether you're talking right lane versus left lane? They can have all of that or the travel lane, the whole thing?
I don't think the sign mentions cyclists. That's not my
It says bicycles may use full lane.
Use full lane or something.
Bicycles may use full lane, is what it said.
It has bicycle, yeah, bicycle icon may use full lane, yeah.
Okay.
And I'd be open to expanding that to bicycle, pedestrian, equestrian, if that's, feels like it's, yeah.
So I feel like I, in my ideal world, I'd go the opposite direction and I would just, rather than adding, um, I feel like it's just way simpler to say caution, blind corner, and then that covers everything. Um, and I'm sure you guys considered that. Was that one of the things that you looked at that didn't have as much effect as
That's not to the point. The point is to protect bicyclists.
Specifically.
When they're making, making these sharp corners and the view is restricted from motorized vehicles.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, and it's not simply saying that the road is, you know, is, is restricted in terms of sight line. It's to protect bicyclists, and it's to alert motorized vehicles that there aren't bicycles, could be bicycles around this here corner. And as Michael indicated, we did extensive research on this, you know, scouring NHTSA, you know, for their information, for signage, and where these signs should be placed. So the study was not done in a vacuum. It was, and, go ahead.
And we also, and just to, you know, further the, it, it wasn't done in a vacuum, it actually responds to the, there's a really specific call out on page three of our town plan where, um, we, as a planning commission, in the plan, we say ensure bicyclists, pedestrians, and pedestrians are accommodated, particularly in the village centers and Route fourteen corridor. So that, you know, maintain Woodbury, Woodbury's roads to a high standard for safety, efficiency, and environmental integrity, although this particular statement limits it to the village center. It was an easy leap to say, all right, well, we have some really hot impact, we have some, some hot spots that we could take care of right now specifically for cyclists and pedestrians. Most of the time, it's not really a pedestrian car safety issue as far as I think we discussed, and we, then, then we focused more in on cyclists, so that's why it was, um, cyclists only.
One of the reasons why they weren't installed at that timeframe is because the, uh, road foreman actually didn't want to install one. He threw up a red herring and said that the town cannot install traffic signs in their roads. And there's a state statute that clearly says that a town road is a town road and they can install traffic signs. So there was kind of a red herring that was thrown up, and then, I don't know, I might have left the board or something like that, or it's on the planning commission then. And it just died a twisting slow death.
Well, you guys brought this to us before the flood, and then that kind of derailed everything too. Um, I, you've done the research, um, I still feel like a blind corner sign is my ideal, but you have done way more work on this, um, and I believe that your research is correct.
Lizzie, why do you say that? I'm curious.
I just think there's been a lot of talk about confusion about the sign that you guys have chosen, and I feel like if the three people I know of who've looked at it have all been initially confused, what's that going to do to any random driver? Um, so to me, I feel like blind corner is just a way clearer message, but if it's true that the research points that people don't pay attention and don't slow down, and it gives less protection for cyclists, like, I think we should move forward with this. I, I don't think it should be held up, so, um.
I would be, there are more than eight spots on Woodbury's class three roads where cyclists and pedestrians, anyone who's not in a car, is potentially disadvantaged because of a road design hazard. I would be happy in the future to try a different strategy to say, if we identify a couple more of these spots, to say, let's give another signage a shot to see if that works a little bit better. The, I think we also talked, we talked about like, and thank you, I really appreciate moving forward with these, with these eight hotspots, and thank you so much for consideration. But the signage should inspire, I think, a little bit of, I think when, when people see signs about lookout, this road has a particular characteristic, your immediate reaction, or my immediate reaction is, of course it does, I know this road. Like, I know everything about this road, I drive it all the time. But the introduction of, oh, there's another person on the road, there's another user of the road that may be using a wider width than you think, or, um, they may be in the middle, not in the middle of the travel way, but in their lane, um, that might inspire some folks to slow down a little bit more. And it's particularly embarrassing, Lizzie, because I think it was only like two weeks ago that you caught me and
I wasn't going to say anything.
Me and Alex Pelt riding to a breast on a road, which is not okay, but
I thought that was our secret, wasn't it?
No, it's okay, it's, 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 um, but that's also sort of like, that's less space. Like, me, Alex and I riding to a breast on a road is less space than I think may use full lane entitles a cyclist to use.
Okay.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Can I make a motion that we go ahead with the signs as they have been presented to us?
Motion, debate. Um, any further discussion?
Do we have any idea if cost, Alfie, have you looked at, have you had a chance to look at this at all? I would be very curious to know if pricing has changed
I'm sure.
on the signs.
It was about eight hundred dollars, wasn't it? So you cost, you bet, huh? But that was just for the signs, not for the pole. Poles are probably more expensive.
That's where they get you.
Yeah.
Well, you have to have the breakaway sign with an anchor, have that anchor and the sign with it. So if a car hits it, it falls away and not into the windshield.
Okay.
That's where the money is, is that the anchor and the post. The sign itself is probably reasonable.
Yeah.
The expenses, there's going to be the posts.
I think we chose, we chose an off-the-shelf, we chose an off-the-shelf sign that's already, that's already like readily available, that meets design standards and stuff like that, so. That's the only thing that I'd be curious about, and
So you're suggesting that maybe we wait on the motion until they got pricing?
I think that the, I think it would be like, nice to know pricing. I think that everybody might appreciate getting pricing, although I can anticipate that it's more than fifteen or twenty percent difference, which would only bring us, I think would still bring us below like fifteen or seventeen hundred bucks for sixteen signs. And I don't know, Alfie, what it costs to, if that's, if there's additional cost to the town to install the signs or if that's just part of routine kind of road maintenance.
Well, we would do it, do it ourselves. It would take away from other projects.
Yeah.
So my question is, would that, would that come out of the highway budget? The, my highway sign budget? Because that's a pretty big hit for a budget that's already not enough.
Was that, what, had you guys had any conversation about where the money would come from?
No, I think that we had the initial figure approved. And then the, the, we hit our, we hit this speed bump afterwards. So the select board approved the, the previous amount of money, and I wonder, just for the sake of like transparency and spending, what the add would be in twenty twenty four to that initiative, so.
Yeah, I think it, I think it was actually in the budget at one point, but Yeah, I think it, I think it was actually in the budget at one point, but, but it's not anymore, we've got two thousand dollars in there.
Okay. I'm happy that it's moving, I'm happy that it's moving forward, but not like, but I don't know the price myself, so.
What, why don't we make, make a suggestion that, um.
So if there's, if there's eight signs.
Yeah.
Or eight sites, that means sixteen signs, right?
Yeah.
So that's sixteen plus sixteen acres. I can get a price for that.
Thank you.
For, for the sign and the anchors, see what that's gonna cost, you already have the price for the signs themselves.
Yeah, in twenty twenty one dollars. So we can, we can, I can double check and we can, we can send that out, but.
I mean, just to keep the ball rolling, you know, I think everybody would wanna know what it's gonna cost, and everybody make a fine decision.
We're trying to find what we have, um.
How long do you think that would take, um, would it take like a day to do the install for the three of you? Do you think longer than that?
Uh, it's probably a day.
Okay.
Uh, providing the locations are clear.
Yeah.
In our minds, you know what I mean, I don't know if you can do GPS or some, somehow to, so we can.
I think we had maps, don't we?
Yeah, there were maps.
Other maps, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we have maps and I can, um, I can put something in, um, I can either put a GPS pin down or if you all use like Esri or ArcMap or any GIS kind of like.
We can use GIS, I think.
Okay. The signs are, um, from trafficsign.com, thirty bucks.
Do you have a picture of the sign, cuz I don't remember the bicycle icon, I just remember may use full lane, which to me would be confusing to any.
So as of, uh, May thirteenth, you had only spent nine hundred and nineteen dollars out of your two thousand dollar budget for FY twenty four. So maybe you could buy some poles or something before July one.
Okay.
Unless you have plans, you have other plans for signs?
Uh, no, I just kind of buy them as, as a little run over.
That doesn't seem like the one I remember that you chose.
Could that be, I don't remember anything about changing lanes.
Changing lanes, depends.
Maybe that's the one, that's it.
I think we have a catalog page, you got the one.
Okay.
And I wonder if you all wanna see that?
Yeah.
That's the one I remember.
That's the one, okay.
So I wonder if that could have a pedestrian icon also?
But.
I think that there are places you can go to get signs printed however, which way you want them.
Yeah.
Um, but cost becomes a bigger, cost becomes a bigger issue than that. And if we went custom sign route, I would definitely suggest giving a cost estimate beforehand.
So those are still, you just looked, those are still thirty a piece?
The, there are a range of prices depending on size. And I, it would take me a little bit of digging to see the catalog page that Skip and I picked up.
Okay.
We have until next meeting to.
Okay.
Figure that out, if you don't mind.
No, absolutely not.
Great, thank you.
Um, I might not, if it's okay to wrap it up over email, um, and have you all make a motion, that would be fine too, but.
Yeah, I don't think you need to come back to the meeting.
Unless you want to.
So there, there is, like I said, there is a thousand dollars left in the budget for FY twenty four. But that's three weeks, but he could buy some poles or something.
Yeah.
Use that, right Alfie?
Uh, yeah, I could certainly use that.
You could, I mean, you could spend that.
Thousand dollars isn't gonna go far though, if you buy anchors and poles.
Yeah, well, still.
That's what we get.
And then next, and then next year, we have another two thousand dollars plus whatever else you need. I mean, you have to, if you need signs, you have to buy signs.
Absolutely, and if there's not enough money in that, in that, why not, I might have to take it from somewhere else.
Or go over.
I think speed limit signs and stop signs and yield signs are up there in the priority list. That's the only question I have, I, I'm all about supporting bicycles riding our roads, but uh, there's also a money factor.
Yeah, so you have to buy what you need, so.
So did we wanna, we wanna see, it sounds like we wanted to see pricing for potentially two different options. One was the previous cyclist may use full lane and then the add alternate of cyclists and pedestrians may use full lane or whatever.
I don't think, I don't think pedestrians.
I feel like the bicycle covers everything because if you're looking out for bicyclists, you're also not gonna hit a pedestrian.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so.
Pedestrians can jump in the woods if they.
That's true.
I've done it.
Getting out of the way to pick, yeah. So, uh, I'll put together, uh, retail pricing for sixteen signs and we'll go from there, it's on.
Okay.
Yep, I'll, by next meeting, I'll have prices for the posts and the anchors as well.
Okay, great.
Thank you both.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Have good evenings.
Thanks for coming, um.
Where are we?
That is a nice segue into our road report. Looks like county, uh, County Road Extension is underway.
It's very much underway, in fact, it's almost done.
Yeah?
That's great.
Uh, we've got gravel on the whole thing, uh, after filling the, the ruts.
James, would you close that door, please?
We are waiting on a response from the state for the hydraulic study to change that one culvert. And then there are also, there's also one other culvert that I would like to change.
In that road?
On the same road.
Yeah.
Um, but I, I, I don't know if I should just change it. Uh, it would be covered by FEMA, I would certainly upgrade it from what's there, but I don't wanna do that without.
So that would be a mitigation project then?
That would be a mitigation.
Yeah.
So you'd just go to a higher volume?
So FEMA would.
Be a bigger pipe.
Bigger pipe.
You're gonna need a bigger pipe.
So I just wanted to make sure, before I changed the culverts, I wanted to make sure that all the.
Can you replace those culverts with the town's excavator?
Um, yes.
I mean, I hate to keep renting that big one if we're waiting for Vtrans to do something, we don't know when they're gonna do it.
Right, well, yeah, I mean, we've, we've rented it for a month.
Yeah.
And so we're like, two, two weeks, so we got two more weeks.
Oh, okay.
Um, I do have another project that just came about, which is another part of my, uh, questions.
Where you could use that?
Where I could use that machine. Uh, because it's got more reach and this particular job is definitely gonna need the reach, it's in West Woodbury. So I've actually purchased the culverts, what I think would be the size, uh, just so I could have them. Because when we're working, I wanna have what we need to have, so I bought them, um. And we can figure out the money later, either come out of, if FEMA doesn't cover it, we'll have to cover it out of our own bucket, uh, one way or another. But, uh, I have them ready to go, so.
And with the hydraulic study that we're waiting on, address the, the other culvert that you're.
It won't.
It won't, okay.
No, it's a different, it's a different stream.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we didn't order the hydraulic study for that.
Does that mean you have to order it or do you not need to?
It doesn't, I mean, we can do it, I think we can do it on our own.
Uh-huh.
And you said it would be a mitigation, we could claim it through FEMA as a mitigation.
This is the County Road Extension.
Yes.
If you're upsizing it, you mean?
This is upsize, right. So the second one we can do, I think without any problems, I just wanted to let everybody know before I did it. The first one that we were waiting for the hydraulic, we absolutely have to wait on that one. Which we can do it with the smaller excavator, a big longer, but we can do it, uh, when that hydraulic study comes in.
And does FEMA require the hydraulic study?
Something like this, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Similar to the hydraulic studies that are required for Town Highways twenty three and twenty four for those bridge replacements.
But not necessarily for the mitigate, for a mitigation project?
For a mitigation project.
So we would have to have a hydraulic study for the second culvert that Alfie's talking.
For, for the County Road Extension.
So they likely, yeah, so how, how do we go about doing that?
Well, you only need the H and H study if you're gonna use FEMA money to pay for it, if you just do it and use town money, um.
Well, it still could be FEMA, covered by FEMA, the second culvert, right, the smaller one?
You can do an H and H study.
Oh, you have to do an H and H study for both of them?
Okay.
Which is gonna be time, which means we can't do it now, we have to go and visit it and.
So if you don't put it in for FEMA, you can.
Just do it.
Just do it.
This project is queued up for an extension, go figure. Uh, so if the work isn't done this year, I'll just write for an extension in December to kick that project out eighteen months.
Yeah, but it shouldn't be, shouldn't need an extension, I mean.
Well, if you don't get the H and H study done, then you run the risk of paying out of Woodbury's pocket for the labor to install the culvert and cost of the culvert.
Right.
And anything that goes along with that.
So you're saying that both of those culverts on County Road Extension need H and H in order to get FEMA coverage?
Yes, just the larger culvert.
Just the larger one, okay.
The one.
I'm so confused.
Yeah, me too.
I feel like I'm hearing both things.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm, I probably confused you, uh, they both need to be, uh, H and H, each study on them.
On both covers?
In order to be covered by FEMA.
Okay.
If we wanna exchange, replace them ourselves with our own money, we can do that.
Okay.
We can probably fudge the, the machine time, you know, by, cuz we can just mix it in with all the rest of the work. I mean, we've been two weeks there working out on, with that machine. If we just don't charge FEMA for the culvert.
So the rest of the road.
Then it gets done. The second one, the one that we've already ordered the hydraulic study for, that we need to wait for.
Okay.
Because it's already in queue at the state.
So we.
Am I, am I speaking out of line here or?
Well, the culvert that you haven't ordered the H and H study for, are you replacing the culvert with a larger culvert?
Yes.
Then you need an H and H study.
Unless we do it and just pay for it.
Unless we do it in our, on our own.
Unless you do it on your own, right, cuz it's.
But if we have to wait on one, we might as well wait on two, right? Is there, I mean, I know you've got the machine, is it, does it seem like it makes more sense to just go for it, um?
To me, it makes sense to, for the town to buy the culvert out of their own money and, and put it in.
Okay.
The, the, the lower one, the one that I didn't realize was a problem before when this all started.
Yeah.
I noticed it as I was working, it's, it's clearly too small, it's only a fifteen and it's super, it's just too small. Same with the one that caused this, which is the one that we've ordered a hydraulic study for, that's the one that caused this whole problem.
Gotcha.
Because it's too small and limbs and stuff got into it and got overtaken.
Okay.
So that one, I definitely feel like we should wait for the hydraulic study, they can tell us what size to put in. This, the fur, the one further down, it's a fifteen, I'm recommending a two foot, put in a two foot culvert and then we're done, I know it's big enough. Even without the hydraulic.
Okay, so now that you explained it like that, so do that. And when I put the essential elements of information, documentation together for FEMA, I'll just say you replace that culvert from an eighteen inch to a two footer, two footer, to a two footer. And if they come back at me, then that's fine, I'll sort that out. But the larger one, that is a state requirement that you have that H and H study, we definitely need that.
Yes.
Yeah.
We need to wait, I agree with that.
Yeah, I think I can take, take care of FEMA, just if you're upgrading it by six inches, I think that's, that'd be fine.
So he's just on the same road, you can't say, can we add this one to that first H and H study? I mean, it was caused by the same storm, right?
Right, but there's quite a bit to ordering a hydraulic study.
Oh, okay.
You gotta meet the guy out there and you gotta, you know, show him the, mark the location and then you get on a waiting list. Which we've been on for this culvert, we've been on the waiting list for what, Michael?
Over a month.
Couple, maybe two months, yeah.
And it's not done yet, so I think to add another one is not gonna, you know.
Oh, okay.
Uh.
Might get us to do it.
Yeah, I mean, especially if you think FEMA must still pay, let's do it.
Yeah.
So what if we, what if Vtrans came out and the culverts were already in, would they refuse to do a study?
He's only gonna put one in, he's not gonna put the other one in?
No, I only suggest he do one.
Yeah.
The one that we've already ordered the hydraulic study for will wait on, cuz that's already in the state's queue and they're already.
And the big machine's already there.
The machine is there.
And so you could just do that and it would be faster.
But he's not gonna do the, that one, that's the one you're gonna wait on?
No.
No, no, uh, there's two culverts, one we absolutely have to wait for.
Yeah. Yeah.
We're gonna have to revisit that one regardless. The second one, I feel like we can go with a bigger culvert, put it in now, the machine's there. And then we're only going back for that one culvert after we get the hydraulic study.
And then you can do, wrap that up and then take the big machine up to.
To West Wood.
West Woodbury.
Which is the next item that I want to talk about.
Okay, let's go, let's move.
So it's been brought to my attention that there's a couple of spots, um, um, what's the name of that road now?
Cape Brook Road.
Brook Road, uh, that the brook is washing the bottom of the road and it's making a collapse in. And people are complaining because there's kind of a hole in the road and they have to steer around it if they meet somebody. So right now I've got cones and barricades up to protect them. What needs to happen is stone, what I call stump bank hardening, which I'll put riprap down over the bank to stop the water from eating out of the road. And there's also a culvert, which a previous road commissioner told me he got permission from the planning commission to add on to the culvert.
That's BS.
He's got it, well, anyway, without.
Which one are you two former chairman of the PC?
No, this was a regional planning commission.
Oh, oh.
That's probably true.
Totally not.
Which local road foreman are you talking about Alfie?
Well, I thought I didn't have to say. Um, so anyway, the, that's the tricky part is because this particular culvert is a squash pipe and they're hard to get. Um, I've told the guy to find me one and so far he's, he hasn't, but he's still working on it.
Mm-hmm.
The reason for extending this culvert, and I tend to agree with it, is that it puts the water out into the main brook. Right now we've got a brook running, there's a brook running here, there is a culvert coming here. So the water comes out of the culvert and it runs down the side of the road. If we extend this culvert, it goes out into the main brook instead of having two brooks. Right now we've got two brooks running beside the road. So if we extend this culvert out, it gets it into the main brook and then this whole section of the road, which is probably two hundred feet, three hundred feet, can be filled in with just regular common fill to protect the road, hard the road. And so my question is, can we add another project to FEMA at this point?
No. All the damage inventories were due to FEMA December fourth, twenty twenty three.
Okay, fair enough, so we have to.
Let me take that as a note, though.
We have to do this, uh, out of our budget. Which, in my opinion, has, something has to be done, regardless, something has to be done, cuz it's, it's a well-traveled road and it's a safety issue.
There are no projects on West Woodbury Road for the floodwater there?
Uh, yes, there are.
But not Cape Brook Road? But who knows?
Cape Brook Road is the one where it's there. It's just above the town line.
Okay, yeah, there's no.
Yeah, well, what about this here Cape Brook Road O two, so Skip, I'm on your chart.
Yeah, I'm trying to find Cape Brook Road, I know it's there somewhere.
I'm page four.
Oh, yeah.
There's two of them.
Side road washed out through the flooding, blah, 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 side of the road washed out through the flooding. So we could add that.
And that's not? And that's not what Alfie's talking about, this specific?
What's on there is not.
It's not.
It's different, how could you?
It's a different issue.
Let me ask.
And it can't be added to, because I thought I remembered at one point we were talking about sections of road, you could have like a few washed outs and it be one inventory item?
That's correct, so.
Could this be like?
It could be one project. So Cape Brook Road, two damage inventories distinct ones, so they, FEMA lumped that into one project. So these locations, side of the road washed out, uh, that has a discrete lat long map point.
Okay.
So they rely on that. If it's something in addition to that, I'll ask them, we have a meeting on Wednesday, helping this up or part of our meeting to see if we can include another Cape Brook Road issue.
And in the meantime, it sounds like you have to do it anyway, so just go for it.
I'll keep track of the machine time and material, same as I do as if it was a FEMA project.
Okay.
Pictures.
And they don't do site visits anymore, right?
Pardon?
FEMA doesn't do site visits anymore?
They're afraid to come out.
It's pretty wild out here in Woodbury. Okay, so that answers my question there. As soon as I get this one culvert in, uh, on the county road extension, I'll move the big excavator to West Woodbury.
And you're in hopes that somebody will find you a squash culvert?
Yes, yes, there is some other, there is other work there that I can do without, without, while waiting for the culvert.
Did you just close that section of road? I mean, people don't have to use that road, right?
No, they do have to.
But I mean, if they, but I, but people who live on West Woodbury Road can go down another way.
They can go.
Round Hill.
Round Hill.
Yeah, so if you have to...
I think the work that I, I think I can do it with just one lane. You know, I'll put barricades up so that people can just stay on one lane. It's kind of a little bit of a corner, but it's sweeping and I think you can see, you know. So I think I can do it without closing.
Whether maybe two residents, maybe three on Cape Brook Road?
Uh, yes, but then you get, once you get up to West Woodbury, there's a lot more.
Yeah, but those people can go, once you get up there, they can go the other way if they need.
Uh, so that's sort of where we're at. We put a lot of time and material into the west county road. Uh, used up all the material that I got from Callis. And then we had to purchase some regular bank run gravel for the filling process. And now we've coated it with, with three inch minus. And that's what I'm gonna leave it at, because it's a, it's low travel road and that stuff really binds together good. So if we do get more rain, it'll, it'll hold up without... So we should be able to finish that, will be done this week, I think, except, with the exception of the one culvert waiting on the hydraulic study for. We can revisit that when it comes. So then next week will be up to West Woodbury. Trying to put out fires up there.
Don't go way down to the end, the south end, because you might get chased by some vicious dogs.
I hear that, yeah. Uh, any other questions about roads?
Let's see. What's that?
Nothing, no.
Thanks Alfie.
Thank you very much.
Skip, you're up. Recovery officers report.
So in front of you is the new damage inventory project number report.
Can I get one?
You can share that one.
Sure.
I think I dropped it. You should have them take it out.
I'd like it back, though.
So this is as of today, uh, as you can see FEMA is working very slowly. We have one project, which was sent to them, that's Old Quarry Road and Blake Hill Road, all the documentation. And then sent to them, the project manager for FEMA sent all that information to the CRC Center. Consolidated Resource Center, which is in Puerto Rico. And they go over what our project manager from FEMA sends them. And then they concur with the information or send questions back. So that's been sitting there since April fifteenth. And it's supposed to take three weeks. So we have a meeting with FEMA on Wednesday, that's one of the agenda items, what's going on with those two roads.
Are there other agenda items? I mean, haven't you covered everything else five times? No? No, dear.
I have the agenda and I'll just read it off to you.
Uh-oh.
So in FEMA's hands now are these small permanent work projects certifications and acknowledgements. So when the project manager from FEMA says, all of his work is done and the information is at the CRC, he is the applicant, has to certify that all the information you send them is correct. And some kind of hesitant to not send them the correct information, because it's a fine up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars if we don't send them correct information. And tail time too, so we don't want to spend any time there. So most recently we sent Cabot Road and the Cape Brook Road. With this small permanent work, work, project certifications and acknowledgements. So that increases, if you look at the last page, page five, that increases what FEMA has in their hands to sixty thousand, six hundred and forty dollars and forty one cents. So I'm hoping that FEMA moves beyond where we are now. FEMA is now stuck on phase four of this, this document, which is project worksheet. So they're stuck on phase four of all these projects. And until they move to phase five, which is to review and sign what's called a sub grant agreement, we won't see any of these money. So they're just, you know, I know they're busy, but, you know, anyhow. So until we see a sub grant agreement, you know, we cannot expect anybody to come blowing into it. But as it stands, we have sixty thousand, six hundred and forty dollars in queue. So hopefully, when we have this meeting on Wednesday, we'll get more of an answer. And I'll be sure to send everyone an email up to, if they give any positive response to where this money is in the pipeline. Any response, you know, because this is starting to be an issue. So again, Woodbury share, when everything's all totaled, totaled up, so we have three hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars in change out there. FEMA share and the state of Vermont share, total three hundred and thirty-four, six thirty-seven. And so Woodbury share would be seventy-five hundred and twenty-seven dollars, if everything goes well. So the agenda for Wednesday meeting, meeting was supposed to be on the fifth last week. So Diana, if you don't have any, take this copy.
It's up, it's up.
Chris is a one hit? What?
We're sharing, it's okay.
I appreciate all the work you put into it, that is not, it's a tremendous amount of work and I do it. But yeah, Diana keeps all my stuff for me.
That's why they call me Uncle R.
So this meeting was supposed to take place last Thursday. The FEMA project manager forgot that he had a meeting last Thursday, so we're hoping to have it on Wednesday. We're hoping to get him out here just to sit down and go over our projects and to see each other in the flesh. Being that, we're gonna have a Zoom conference call, which is good.
It won't be the same people that were here last time, or?
Oh, it'd just be one of them, one of them. Yeah, Terry Halsey, he's a gentleman from Tennessee. And hopefully he'll come on. So the projects that he's working on are Old Quarry Road and Blake Hill Road. And they're at the CRC Consolidated Resource Center. Woodbury Hardwood Rail Trail. And we'll get back to that in a couple of minutes. Terry said he's working on to complete the essential elements of information, that's labor materials and equipment usage. Uh, north and south parks at CRC pending keyway review. And they were looking for information regarding insurance claims, just to be certain that the parks and the land in the parks do not cover by any insurance within it. So we sent them eleven documents divided by Regional Planning Commission and by Robin. Each of them stipulating that the land is not covered. The radar speed control sign, again, Terry is working, uh, to finish those essential elements of information. And he's made a request for a tabletop site inspection, so...
Tabletop what?
Site inspection.
What does that mean?
That's, well, my question to him today was, please explain a tabletop site inspection. Whether that's going over the photos that we've already sent him and the before and after photos and say, yeah, here it is, it's done. I guess, I don't know, not a clue, first time I hear that. Learned a lot of new terms.
Every time you, every time you meet with these people, it's something new.
So he goes on to say, north and south park is closed, I don't believe that. And Cabot Road is pending peer review. And he said, the projects held up multiple items related to mitigation statement of work. And he said, Terry will provide information for that. So for this one, you can go on the grants portal, look at all of them, see the history of who's worked on it, what they've done. So this Cabot Road has had three peer reviewers since it's hit the CRC. They keep hitting reassigned.
Is that the?
Reassigned.
Oh, that's not the bridges?
Now, obviously, this is something different. Mitigation, so we'll be discussing mitigation questions concerning town highways twenty-three and twenty-four bridge on Wednesday. And for that mitigation, I'll add to the agenda, county road extension, the larger culvert, which we'll have an H and H study for. And we'll discuss that at that meeting. Okay, obligated projects, so when you go onto the grants portal, you click on, it'll pull down a file and you can see all your obligated projects. And what that means is that the money's been approved from FEMA and now the Department of Public Safety, the state of Vermont will send you a sub grant agreement. So none of our projects are obligated yet.
Can I ask, do you know how other towns are faring in this process?
Uh, anecdotally, I heard that Hardwick has one project that has been obligated. That's just anecdotally.
Okay. So not much better?
Who's doing their work?
Probably not much better than...
Probably not.
Yeah.
And there are some other, you know, mundane issues, like this small permanent work certification and acknowledgements form. When do we fill it out? Do we send it directly to you or do we put it on the grants portal? What I've been doing is putting it on the grants portal and sending it to him in hopes to cover all the bases. So that's our pretty full agenda for next Wednesday. And if I can get back to Woodbury Hardwick Rail Trail. So part of the damage inventory was, because of that big landslide, Alfie and his group, based on a, a engineering study by DeWolfe and Associates, moved part of that rail trail back onto bedrock. Well, when they read that, they at the CRC read that, uh, it sent tremors through them or some, that's the best way I could describe it. And here's one of the emails I got today. It says, "Good day, the applicant's engineer, we're the applicant, engineer is DeWolfe, will need to upload into the project the before and after pre-disaster versus new construction to identify the spatial extent of the ground disturbance." We've done that, that long, we've given them that. The site plans will also include GPS coordinates, we've done that. What we haven't done is give them the depth of grubbing. So I looked at that and I said, depth of grubbing, what does that mean? You know, I've learned about riprap, I can walk back on ground, quarter miles, quarter miles. Here's a new term, depth of grubbing. You know, I see scum, scrubbing for grubs, you know, things like that. So I did a Google search and so the depth of grubbing, I guess, is you pull a stump out, you know, you make sure that all the vegetation associated with the stump is gone, all the vegetation underneath that. Correct me if I'm wrong, and so we have to give them the depth of grubbing. Good luck with that.
Well, if you're scraping down to bedrock.
Well, they need the depth.
Yeah, how far you? I must admit, when I saw the notation of relocating the trail, I was kind of surprised, because it, it makes it sound like it could have been totally relocated, but it was just widened.
Yeah, it's just moved over.
Or something. And the site plans, you know, depth of grubbing, identification of those locations where tree root, root balls, detailed methods repairs regards to move further into the bedrock of the mountain to improve stabilization, and on and on. So I reached out to our friends at DeWolfe and they have been really helpful.
Oh, good.
They sent back this, you know, four-page email with their study, what they've done. So I fired that off back to FEMA today at about quarter to five and said, here you go, you know.
Well, they did do a study, I didn't realize that.
It wasn't a formal study, of course, per se, it was a twenty-five hundred dollar study came back in the form of an email with photos.
Yeah, I mean, they sent somebody out to look at it.
And the site visit, right.
Yeah.
And it was comprehensive, so, you know, I didn't, I read it and there's nothing that says depth of grubbing. So I hope you don't get hung up with that. I think so, so in essence, that's all, we have a kind of a holding pattern, which is frustrating to Danielle and I, because, you know, she's put in a lot of work on this and, you know, it's just aggravating that we keep sometimes getting the same questions. They lose information, so we have to resubmit. You know, it's, it's tough on the town too, because you guys are trying to be setting your tax rate. And if we have some of this money coming in.
That'd be nice.
And anticipate when the rest of it will come in, it would make budgeting a lot easier. So I'm gonna keep at them and I don't want to be too much of a squeaky wheel, but, you know, I'll be persistent. So any questions?
No, thank you.
I just wanna know what tabletop inspection is.
A tabletop site inspection?
Yes.
I think they need to go on to that rail trail again.
Well, I would be surprised if they would be able to walk back up that grade, once they walk down it, try to walk back up that. Some of these guys aren't in the business.
Oh, really? Is it, is it Steve?
Pardon?
Is it Steve?
Have you tried it?
No, not for years and years and years.
Yeah, we got your attention.
Trail itself is not steep.
You may, the slide.
Oh, oh, wow, oh my goodness, no.
No, no, I'm talking, drive slow on Route fourteen.
Walking back up that grade.
I skied it one time. I was, I skied it one, on cross-country skis and that was kind of sad, because I expected a long, slow downhill and really it was like walking most of the way. That was a long time ago.
You should try it again.
Oh, yeah, I should. Once my knee gets fixed. Yeah.
Thank you, Skip.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item is our memorandum of understanding for the Woodbury Volunteer Card Department.
And this was emailed to you all?
Yeah.
Yeah, I read it.
It's pretty much the same, right?
Same thing, just updated numbers for.
Updated numbers?
Yep.
Which numbers are?
Uh, there, let me correct myself, by numbers, I meant dates.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, the exact numbers are not, haven't been put into the MOU since I've been on the department.
Yeah, no, they, yeah, the numbers are in the budget.
Yeah.
This just has to do with operational stuff.
Does this require a motion?
Yeah, I think we should have a motion. Okay, I'll make a motion that we uh sign the memorandum of understanding between the Woodbury Volunteer Fire and Rescue, Inc. And the Town of Woodbury.
Any discussion? Hearing no, all those in favor of signing the MOU, please say aye.
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 Passes unanimously.
Do you want copies to be signed?
Yes, um, and I will take both of them with me tonight and have Paul sign them tomorrow.
I only have one copy, okay.
And I will uh, I'll bring your guys' copies to the town office.
Okay.
And I think this.
What's that?
That's, we send them, I think.
Right, but we need to give this back to Robin. Oh, some, Lizzie didn't sign this one.
No, not yet. I'll change it to him. Wait, this is the sheriff's one.
Yeah, right.
Oh, am I supposed to sign both sheriff ones?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
We keep one and.
And that goes to Robin too?
Yeah. Robin will send one back and file one.
And then you're taking both of these.
I'm gonna take both of them with me and then I will have Paul sign them tomorrow night because he couldn't make it tonight. And then I will drop your guys' copies at the town office.
Thank you.
The sheriff's one, I think you need to put that five-thousand dollars on the next line down.
I thought I did.
They really did.
Oh, yeah, that's ours per week.
Oops, sorry, cross that out then if I put it on.
Uh, should we leave the ours per week claim?
They did last year.
And now they'll, they'll figure it out based on.
There's no way we can figure it out, you know.
Does the other copy someone?
Uh, with you, I thought I give it to you, yeah, right there.
James, are you the president of the department?
Okay, this one's from the mayor, that's okay.
All right.
Well, that was easy.
We've already approved and signed the contract with Washington Cherry.
We did that already.
Yep. And then um, next item is to discuss the complaint made to uh, made to the Vermont Department of Health and set up a site visit.
Okay.
Is this for Quarry Road?
Yes, it is.
All right.
And um, Mr. Roebel called the health department. And, and I'm not sure exactly what he told them, but they, basically, they called me. And I have a, here a printout that they sent me, uh, how to determine what is a public health hazard. And I have, before this, I have been reading, I have read the Town Health Officer Manual. And it's pretty clear that a public health hazard is something that's a hazard to the public health. Not somebody who doesn't have good sewage disposal on their property. So I think what I have to do here is go to the property and look, maybe just walk around the perimeter, I don't even know. I mean, it's just a town roads, right, old town roads, and see if I see or smell anything. And if anybody wants to come with me, that'd be nice.
I'm happy to.
Watch out for the dogs up there.
The dogs, I think, are Alan's, I'm not worried about them, but, of course, the other one.
There's the other ones farther down, but they're way farther.
Yeah, I would go in from the top, probably.
I'll go with you then.
Oh, thank you. So I don't know if the person who lives there is there during the day. We're not, we don't have to go on the property, so. But it would be nice to let her know we're coming if, but we don't have a phone or anything, so.
Way to get a hold of her besides that, the box and weight scales or whatever.
Yeah.
I mean, you're gonna be walking on a public road, so.
Right, not gonna go on the property.
Their whole facility is, is right next to our public highway.
The what? Oh, the trailer that.
The trailers are right, right next to her, almost on our right way, so it'll be our right way the whole time, just for all.
Speaking of which, I can't remember how we uh are resolving the car.
I thought we said July first. Oh, I'm just gonna double check the date, but I'm pretty sure the letter said July first.
Okay, great, so we.
We had a bunch of emails from.
From Alan's.
Who was checking with other agencies and was told, I mean, one of the emails we got says you should call the state police. I think you could call the state police if somebody has left the car in the road.
Which they did, it is in the road.
Well, you know, in the traveled way.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like they have something in motion.
I don't think we need to call, I don't think the state police are gonna come out for somebody parking on the, basically, on the side of the road, so.
I don't think so either.
So I don't know why all those other emails are.
So we'll, we'll bring this up at a, next, like we're meeting after July first and then decide whether we'll hire a towing company?
I think we've kind of decided that, but we just.
Yeah.
Decided to wait till July first. And then you can tell us whether we need to hire somebody or.
Yeah, you haven't heard anything, I, I don't expect that you would get a call.
I've actually, no, I haven't heard anything. I, I have, I've tried to stop there periodically and knock on the door just to have a conversation. I get nothing.
Yeah, okay.
Either they know somebody's there and they're not answering the door, or there's a vehicle in the yard other than the, the one that we're trying to get removed. Um, so I'm sure somebody's there, but they're just not answering the door.
Okay, yep.
I've been there a couple of times, just to try to have a conversation and see if we can help.
Yeah.
If the car is causing problems for everybody.
It would be so much easier if they'd just say yes, take it.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, really. So you think this other um car that's in this picture is one that's being used, looks like a Forrester maybe, or a?
That's Jezebel's car.
Oh, really?
It's a Volkswagen.
What's she doing way up there?
Uh, I'm not sure, maybe it was during mud season, like actualization.
Maybe she got stuck, maybe, hmm, yeah, okay, I don't know.
That's not. That's, that's what I go by.
That's what she uses that name to.
That's what she uses, right, so. I, I'm pretty sure that's Jezebel's car.
Yeah. I can't tell if it's a Vermont flight. Anyway, okay, so that's not an indication that the resident is there or not. Okay. So.
All right, so I guess just let me know when you'd like to go do that visit.
Okay.
Either early in the morning or at the end of the day, it's better for me.
Mm-hmm.
She's usually dropping her kid off down here at seven-twenty in the morning, school days.
Oh, I thought there weren't, wasn't a kid living there anymore, no?
Every time I bring the girls up for Debbie, he's getting out of the car.
Oh, hmm.
Yeah, I, I've seen the boy, evidence of the boy living there.
Hmm. Oh. Can I add one other thing out of the blue?
You, yeah.
Can't stop me.
Yeah, right.
Somebody built a fence across a town road.
Oh, yeah, you mentioned that.
Right.
Yeah.
What, do we just send them a letter or do we just?
It's a letter, knock it upside the head with a letter.
I was gonna drive up there today, I wanted to go look at it before the meeting, but I didn't have time to.
Remind me where this is?
Uh, Flat Street. Which is up the road, yeah, the first, you know, the left of four little houses, then.
Off that road.
Yeah.
Okay.
You take the right, and when you get to the top of the hill, um, go past four little houses, go around, pass the back of two of the houses, and all of a sudden, there's a fence. Right across the road.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, the town used to plow that road in the winter.
The town plows it, it's a class.
No, they haven't plowed it for a couple of years, not the back street. So the last couple of years, when I first started, the first year I plowed, um, I did plow around there.
Yeah.
And then halfway through that year, they started blocking it.
No.
So there's always litter across and a bunch of tree debris and they obviously didn't want me plowing it for whatever reason.
So what did the Burns do? I mean, the first house, they could get out.
They drove right past Blake's house and took their place.
Oh, so, okay.
Yeah.
But it isn't, the whole thing's a town road, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is it though?
I don't know, is it?
Yeah, because Russell put in a driveway and I had to change his address because he put in a new driveway.
He put in a whole new driveway off Cavit Road.
Right, so he has a driveway off Cavit Road now, which changed his address from Flat Street to Cavit Road.
Okay.
So you may have to look at his property and parcel to see how far his parcel goes. And whether or not Flat Street has a Class Three or Four Road.
It's, it's been, uh. It's Class Three on the map and on the list that I have.
Right, we gotta find how far it goes. Does it loop all the way around or does it just do a J kind of?
And would the, would the town roadmap show that or do we need to go to the parcel and see if there's like an easement for road right of way?
You wouldn't find that. Those houses have been there forever.
Yeah.
Um, but it is, there is a town road number and um, all the maps show it go all the way around, but I don't have any of that.
Does your letter that you drafted for the Quarry Road issue um work for this?
Yep, I believe, I, I'll double check the wording, but we sent it to somebody else too that wasn't on Quarry Road, so. It's pretty much just about i- if you have objects or structures or whatever within the right of way. So I think it'll work, I can double check. And then I guess, I can try to verify, I can try to look at the road maps or whatever, I don't know if somebody else might have more experience with that. Just to verify, I don't want to send a letter if it's not.
The nine-one-one map is pretty clear.
Nine-one-one map, okay.
And I, I can look at that also.
Okay.
So I guess the last thing we want to do is, is get us in our kind of warrants that we don't really have right to.
But they're not claiming that.
If the road does stop there where he's got his fence.
Yeah.
Then we're marking up the wrong trip.
And it, I don't know who built the fence, but is it someone who already is upset with us over other things or, I know there's some.
I think the person that built the fence is upset with the neighbor.
Okay, gotcha.
And for, went with us for not doing anything with the neighbor.
Okay. Yeah, we definitely don't want to add insult to injury, right?
Oh, my goodness, no.
I thought it just, just dog ear, dog ear, easy cross your eyes. For placing words.
So that's probably for the next meeting.
But if the town has been plowing that for hundreds of years, does it become a town road that way? And does it come property of the town?
No, they could, but that's complicated.
Yeah, there is legal precedent for that, I can't remember the.
Eminent domain. Is it eminent domain?
Yeah.
No, it's um, there's two words to it.
James has his hand up.
Maybe James knows, has handed.
Well, so according to the nine-one-one map, Flat Street goes all the way around.
Oh, okay.
But there, I think there are two, two different road numbers, one is called Flat Alley. The back one is called Flat Alley.
But it says. This just says Flat Street.
Town road all the way.
Yeah, it does say Flat Street all the way around it. It does not end at Russell's old driveway.
So there's our answer.
Okay, well, good, thanks for doing my homework for me. You wanna come to the next meeting too?
Might just be a council, probably.
Well, it's good for you guys, knowing there's a fence there, if you go.
Yes.
Yeah, if you get a call or something.
Text Paul and let him know that, because I don't think we can make that turn uh by Blake's old residence, so.
No. Yeah, so the end of the road comes between Blake's and Burns. Okay. Thank you for allowing me to make that intrusion.
Can I add something?
Sure.
This is from Brandy. She was in today to do the payroll, because Pam's on vacation, and she also did up the sheet with the numbers for the last two weeks. And for income, we had five thousand two hundred seventy-three dollars and seventy cents. And thirty-five hundred of that was delinquent taxes. And the rest of it was fleet license, access permit, sale of lots, oh, cemetery lots. And dock licenses, Green Mountain passports, land recordings. MAC record and town hall rental, vault fees, zoning permit.
You want to leave that with my caller?
Mm-hmm. And then for expenses for the last two weeks, payroll was seven thousand three hundred ninety-four dollars, sixty-two cents. And AP, seventeen thousand, six ninety-six and eighty cents. And today she transferred fifty thousand from the money market to the check in the can.
Thank you.
All right. I believe that uh we're on to signing extension for Listers. Um, and then signing the firework paper alarm. And then signing our law and willing contract, we've already approved that previously.
Good night.
Good day, guys.
Good night, guys.
Night.
Thank you.
See you, Robin.
Yeah.
Um, and then we could, maybe we'll go on to the town hall roof after, want to sign those things first. And then get them out of the way.
Well, so this one here, I didn't actually look at it very closely, so I'm not sure where it's signed.
I'll drop this off to you Wednesday or Thursday.
Look, fun.
Thank you.
Bye.
Have a good night, good day.
Have a good night. Are you guys okay with just signing it and I can fill in all the rest? Like, I don't know how you guys feel about that, there's, I haven't been able to look at it and it looks like it's gonna.
Did they, did they?
Take a minute.
Finish what they were doing?
That I'm not sure yet.
Okay, are they waiting for anything from us?
Uh, they're waiting for this, they were waiting on answers to questions, so I sent you guys.
But are they waiting for this before they finish the job?
As far as I knew, when I last communicated with him, they had planned on coming on a Friday.
Yeah, a couple of weeks ago, yeah.
Um, I never talked with him afterwards to verify if they came or not, so I'm not sure. Um, I do know they had a list of a few questions and then this form that needed to be signed.
I can't remember, here it is.
So if you guys need me to find that out first, I, I guess that I understand.
Well, there was something about who should, who should be come on, and we haven't determined that.
Or we didn't really talk about it. I mean, I feel like somebody on the fire department would be great, although we obviously have to.
We need to ask.
Ask them.
And um.
I know, I should ask him, he was here.
Donnie would, um.
Do you want me to reach out to those people? Do you want to make a list of people and call them and see if they'll do it?
I guess.
You don't mind, it'll go.
I don't mind. Um, so it's Donnie Turgeon?
Turgeon.
Was Donnie?
He's the maintenance guy for the school.
Okay.
And he lives fairly close.
I think that as for three people.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe he said two or three, uh, so that would be somebody on the fire department, Donnie, if they're willing, and then who could be our third person? Uh.
Could be just a.
Two people in the fire department?
Roy Demers, maybe?
Who?
Roy Demers, he's close.
Roy?
Roy Demers is on the fire department and he just lives down the street a little bit.
Okay.
As does James. And James, did you mention?
James lives in Calis.
James doesn't, yeah.
Oh, he lives in Calis now, or he doesn't, okay.
No, it's Thomas that's over here.
Okay, all right.
Um, well, I can get a little of the fire department and ask, I mean, sorry, guys, I have my phone on because my kids are home now. That's not my kids. Anyway, um, yeah.
Do we have our three possible?
May, like, I would say from the fire department, maybe if I just reach out to the fire department in general.
And that's, there could be two.
The fire department, yeah. But I mean, one, one would be like to their main number, whatever they're.
Uh, they're looking for three individuals, so it would be like, yeah, whoever they're willing to have do it, I guess.
What were the other questions that they had? I looked at it.
I'll let you mail back up, I feel like we already answered the other ones.
Okay.
Of course, now I shut my phone off. I think the other questions were if it was the library specifically who was gonna be paying or if it was the town, and we already talked about that, and it's the town.
Mm-hmm.
Um, other than that, I think that was it.
Yep, I think that's it. Yep, I think that's it. At least that's all, this is the email from Rusty.
Okay, so I will verify those three people. I will get ahold of him and see if the work's all done. And I can also, um, if you guys want, I know I emailed to come to this. I had to print it 'cause I can't look at this on my phone, but I can go through it and fill it out. And then maybe we can all sign it at the next meeting, if that works for you guys.
Or I mean, this, this is just like the final agreement?
I have no idea.
Okay.
'Cause I couldn't wrap my head around it.
Okay. Yeah, so let's look at it in the next meeting.
Okay, that works.
For the fire, fire alarm contract. All right.
I feel bad 'cause they might be waiting on payment, but.
And, um, well, I'm, I'm okay. I, I feel like the board can also authorize one or member to, to sign for the board. Is that true?
To sign what?
This?
This, the, the contract.
What does it have? What does it have for signature lines? Does it ask you for one?
Um, let's see, it's unrelated. I don't even know what half this stuff means, to be perfectly honest. And, customer initials, I. Oh, that's where it is. It's really only asking for one signature. They've already filled it in as Woodbury Community Library, which I think we would wanna change, right, to Woodbury Town Road. I might actually have to go over this with him on the phone, 'cause.
Well, why don't we put it on accident and then we'll.
Okay, I mean, they weren't in it, they already get it done, so.
Okay.
And then how about the mowing contract?
Wait, no, we did, we skipped the listers extension.
Okay.
Right? I mean, that was on, and this is something they do every year, because there's just no way they can get their work done between April one and July one or whenever it is that the state wants it, so the state always approves. We just have to say that we approve.
All right.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the listers extension.
All right, any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes.
And I'll take that back to Ron.
All right.
And he'll send it to the state.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay, and so now the mowing contract. We did approve this.
Yep.
But we just didn't, um, I think I sent you this. Copies of this on email, so you can review it, but, uh. Basically, this is the same thing that Brandy has used in the past. I just, um, sort of beefed up the list of the town properties to make sure that he knew that there are two parks over there and.
So we sent it and then we sent it to him, he, he has to sign it?
Yeah, we will sign it and then we'll give it to Robin and she can tell him it's here for him to sign it, right? Is that okay?
Yes.
Tell him, make a motion that we sign that contract that we've already approved.
Discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 So we, motion to sign the contract is approved.
That one says we need a witness. Who, do we need to ask one of you guys to be our witness?
It does seem, yeah, it does say we need a witness.
Town clerks need witnesses.
You want to be our witness, Robin?
Sure.
I'll run it, send it, please.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, I forgot to ask Alp, but I guess the, the sand screen must have arrived.
Yes, it did.
Yeah.
It was Tuesday.
Yeah. I hope he was happy with it. I forgot to ask.
So when I went back and reread the draft of the scope of work for the town hall roof, I realized there's a bunch of, there are some, um. We need to clean it up grammatically, but, um, I mean, it's all just bullet points anyways.
Did you, uh, oh shoot, I'm gonna do a lot of my stuff. You got the, uh, email from Mary Jo Llewellyn?
Oh, I'm just seeing this.
I haven't reread it yet, no.
Okay, yeah.
She put, is the, the red is her comments, I am assuming. Okay.
She's our, um, our free consultant. And she said she'd be happy to meet with us at some point and you'll worry anything. That's her specialty. And she lives in Woodbury.
If we have to mill it, is there any like molding, I, I don't remember up in the soffit or like in that area?
Any what?
Is there any like molding or, uh, decorative molding or any kind? I'm just reading her comments and thinking about matching.
I don't know. No.
I don't really, I mean, these, she, without due respect, she's a consultant, right?
Yeah, she did work for the state for years.
I'm not too worried about the roof sheathing underneath.
I like the, whoever, you know, figure that out.
Not worried about the roof sheathing, I mean, it, yes, whoever pulls it off and finds rotten roof decking, they can, you figure it out.
Oh, okay.
We don't need to go to Joel to get special milled boards.
Uh-huh. Well, what if it, what if, um, the, it's the original decking and it's not the same as.
You can.
Boards that you buy.
You gotta remember this building is on the historical registry.
Yeah, but, well, I can't imagine that they care about, um, replacing the roof decking. This is like underneath the, underneath the metal.
She's just working 'cause she's afraid that the thickness that, of what they use won't be the same as what's on the market today. But whoever the contractor is will be able to use to, like, they'll figure it out. They'll be able to make it match.
Any replacement material must match the dimensions perfectly, starting to install. That it disappears above two, that's true.
There's that.
That aluminum does not.
Okay, so I had. Made copies of that. I'm having a hard time printing today from emails, but. And I was not able to find, uh, draft RFPs. In the, you know, the short amount of research I did today.
I have, and I said I would send you though, realizing I did, I do have some RFPs for different town projects.
Okay.
That I could send. Thank you for knowing that. There's a difference between the galvanized and the galvanized.
I don't know.
I can find that. There is a difference.
Okay.
And my understanding is the galvanized is a little, is a little better, but I'm not sure if that's like, I couldn't tell if that's what she was suggesting. We should not. They don't look, they don't look that different.
I think she just cares about it being paint, like colored, like she doesn't want like charcoal color.
No, 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 yeah.
That's what I'm getting from this.
The galvanized looks just like galvanized.
Yeah.
Which is what's up there.
Yeah. Uh, my only comment was taping the drip edge. I don't know that it matters if it's, 'cause it's not plywood. I'm assuming anyway that it's just like boards, deck boards.
Sure, you can take that out.
Unless you feel that it should be there.
I don't, I don't, I can't that much.
Yeah.
I would do it if I was doing it, but.
Okay. We can leave it too. I'm good with that too.
It's not gonna cost them that much to do.
Yeah.
Um, so it looks like we just need to get, so we can refine that scope of work and then, Michael, you can send us RFP template? Or you would use.
I'll just send you some old, I mean, they were made from templates for recent.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I can. It's so hard to find anything on the VLCT website. It's really too bad.
Thank you. Um, and then the next thing would be Michael, the LHMP consultant contract.
Yeah, so we're getting ready to begin to work on a local hazard mitigation plan. And we were sent a contract by Paul DiCiano, the consultant that, um, the town's chosen to help with the plan. He sent us a contract. Um, I sent it to Brandy, who sent it to, um, Vicky Abear of VLCT Passive. And we added, or actually Paul added some language about insurance, et cetera. And he sent this back to us, um, based on the recommendations from, um, Vicky Abear from VLCT. So should be good, um. And it'd be great to get it signed because we have a meeting with him next week. And I think I, I did send you guys copies of the, it's pretty short, simple.
Yeah, I was able to read it on my phone.
So, okay, you want this one, Stuart?
Well, I guess I don't, I didn't print one out, so I don't know if I signed.
You're fine, I have swat them to have that one.
These are sort of such relationships with parties, compensation for birthdays.
So what I'll do is, once it's signed, I'll, I'll scan it and send it back to him.
Okay. So we got one line, so it's okay if I sign this?
Okay, by me. I just realized you're talking about taping the drip edge to the underlayment. Oh, no, to the deck.
Yeah, and then just rubbing the underlayment over the top of it.
Okay, gotcha.
It doesn't matter to me.
No, no, I just thought I had misunderstood.
And then our last item is to approve bills and payroll orders. Which we'll do right now. Thanks, Michael.
Sure.
Are you done with bees? Or you still have bees?
I don't have bees, but I'm thinking I might get something through, uh.
Nice hanger, huh?
Beef, yeah. It's expensive.
That's it? Yeah, it's expensive honey, or not. Or expensive insect watching.
I've seen a lot of bumblebees in the wild. Didn't see so much last year, so.
No.
Yeah.
I've been seeing bats coming back, like, a lot of them, so that's a good thing.
Do you want me to wait for those?
You don't have to, if you, I can bring them by.
Okay, here's a.
Thank you.
Robin, can I have the little report that Brandy, that you wrote out about Brandy?
I just handed it to you.
You did? Okay.
I can write one.
Oh, we don't have to worry about this being a classroom anymore.
Uh, for a little bit. School ends on Monday, the seventeenth.
Okay, all the nasty signs are gone.
But we think that this is like almost over there.
So were, um, were these chairs over there or were the?
After all, you put.
They were, they were placed at all these.
Some of them, there were three tables in the middle.
Okay, well, look, maybe I'll just leave you guys.
Okay. Guys, have a good night.
Have a good night, Robin.
Good night, Robin.
Night.
The tables are on the. The smaller tables were set up at this height.
Right, right, right. And then, uh, put that, that one you can put down and put back over there.
Okay.
And this one will move around to where that one was a minute ago.
It didn't clean in very well. I can do this, right? Okay. We got other things to do.
Well, the camera's still running.
Oh, all right. Well, in that case.
In that.
Get to work. Was this like, were they?
They were, the chairs were on both sides.
Okay, so they were.
More or less like that, yeah. They're pretty close.
I won't be here. Anybody tell me they were different?
So, I'm gonna stand. Is this where the table? Yeah.
This is where they were.
Is it?
I don't know.
I bet he's very scared.
Who's that?
He leaves us mean letters.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Has it ever been worse than the mean letter?
No, I mean, I, I don't even actually know who leaves letters. I think it's our teacher, but I'm not sure.
Is this pretty good?
Yes.
All right.
It's a very good approximation. It was, I think it's an exact reproduction.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll take that down a little.
Okay.
Maybe we can do that.
Well, I don't know about that guy with the dog complaint. It was Bryn Paul's dogs that he was complaining about.
Who is, who's that?
Uh, Bryn Paul, who's the, the problem person up on, well, he just wanna.
Is the one that's building the, is he the one that's building the kinda like crazy house up there with all this stuff?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and they claimed that he bought Eric's, Eric Johnson's, um, property for thirty dollar, for three hundred dollars and.
Is it on Eric's property? Or is there an official transfer of property?
Yeah, yeah, good question. It's all bound up with the, uh, tax sale bullshit. It's a, it's a shame, it's a mess.
So.
Oh, you left the camera on. I forgot that last time.
Camera is still running.
It doesn't count if you're not running it. So anyways, yeah, it's, uh, the person who owns the dogs is, the person who complained is way at the end just before you go into the woods.
Okay.
And the person who owns the dogs is be- before that, the closest neighbor.
Down the road, dogs.
Dogs, yeah, big dogs. Bark at his truck and run alongside until he gets home and then jumps on his truck, I guess.
And this is a new owner, a new?
He's a fairly new, the, the guy, um, at the end of the road, Matthew Hall, is fairly new. But he claims that he's made complaints about this before and I've never heard any, so I don't know. I guess I'll better call him. I don't know what to do. We, we don't have anybody to, anybody wants to be the dog officer. Is there another pile there that I haven't looked at?
Well, there's this one I just signed that I looked at.
This is where's the actual bills, right?
She didn't have real dinner, she just had snacks, right?
I just had snacks.
Yeah, it's like a tea.
I know, I'm so hungry, though. Are you still doing the no lunch thing?
I was gonna tell you, I've changed my ways, I'm eating breakfast.
Eating breakfast, and lunch, no lunch?
No breakfast, yeah. I didn't think I was gonna eat it, but I kinda do.
Wait, so, but you used to do that, you never used to.
I don't think I ate breakfast.
You never ate lunch?
Well, I never ate lunch, but I also never ate breakfast.
Jeez, you only ate one meal a day?
No, I ate like five, five at dinner. Like, I'd go home and have like dinner number one, dinner number two, dinner number three.
What about that guy you work with, is he with you?
Uh, he's not with me right now, he's got, he had a whole list of stuff he had to get done, um, before this county road project, um, that I talked to you about, so he's off doing his own thing, but he does eat when he feels like it.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Um.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.